Led by trusted police.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the board meeting of the life trophy. Just a reminder, if there is an emergency, we actually agree in the building, both on the building, which is available to you. Go to your vehicles, please do not get in your vehicle or actually get in your vehicle until someone has an emergency service personnel. This is not smoke in buildings, so you must, this is all outside.
Yes, good evening everybody, just one board meeting, a minute approval from June 23rd, 2014 meeting.
Motion to accept it, present.
I have a correction. On page five. Toward the end of the first paragraph. Is the word poll, it should be spelled P-O-L-L-T-E. C-O-L-D-E. That's all I can find.
There's interruptions to the inter-dission. Motion to accept it, present.
Motion, second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
I'll stay, how was it?
We miss you too, Bill. Bill, try to, it's closing.
Good evening, how's everybody? Built for tonight, or for the period of June 21st through July 14th. Quite a few, total of a million fifteen thousand seven eighty-seven eighty-one. The five largest, Patrick Fire Department, first half of our ambulance service costs for 14, 15, was two hundred ninety-six thousand five sixty-five. We had some curb and sidewalk, sidewalk work done at Terry Street, Jacob, forty-five thousand five oh eight forty-one. Another check to CBA for thirty-nine thousand or twenty-one oh five, sidewalk from the property owners. H2M, twenty-eight thousand sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. River Avenue Sewer and Sewer District Engineering costs. Island Industrial Boiler, twenty-five thousand three sixty-five thirty-five. Can I have approval, please?
Motion to accept it, present.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
Just on the term in sidewalks on Terry Street.
They'll be reimbursed.
Yeah, that's being reimbursed, that goes back to a grant that we got at the beginning of last year.
And you're gonna see, I'm gonna do a, a request and approval for the general fund, the loan capital projects fund. Okay, I have a budget adjustment to increase revenue account for federal FEMA money, twenty-three thousand dollars. And increase expense account, highway salaries for the same amount. That's a budget adjustment, it's from reimbursement received from party Sandy, if I could have approval for that.
Motion to accept it, present.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
Then now I have the approval for the general fund to loan capital projects fund, one hundred four thousand seven dollars and thirty-six cents. That's for Terry Street and River Avenue Sewer project. And that is a grant that will get that money back. If I could have approval.
Who, second, no favor.
Aye.
Okay, I missed, I have a lot of budget transfers. There's three, four pages of it. At the year end, the balance. Close out the red accounts and cover them with the white. If I could have approval for those.
Motion to accept it, present.
Motion, second.
Second.
No favor.
And you have, for your information, the cash balances as of May 31st. Our office will hear it. Thank you very much.
The ambulance budget, two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. We, the ambulance cost the village six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And two, two members of my family have benefited from that, they got a trust to pay the hospital on the village taxpayers. We're looking into having the trips to the hospital be reimbursed from people's medical insurance. It is not currently down so, so the, the big line I, that we're working on. At least reduce it, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's, it's not quite open up state, but drag a little down here.
Let's be on stage.
Somebody's gotta start, right?
Yes.
I mean most, almost everybody's insured, okay, you just ask.
Just every cap. Transferred some money for equipment. That would be out of time.
Yeah, it also pays down the mortgage. As a part of these, they, 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 they salary personally. And their salary is being, maybe you should have a place. Repaying, repairing, expanding, not even expanding. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good time to meet. And this is finally honor our residents with Patchogue Pride Awards. And these are people who have maintained their properties and beautified their properties and in turn, beautifying the Village of Patchogue. So, Incorporated Village of Patchogue, in cooperation with the building department and Architectural Review Board, proudly present the Patchogue Pride Award, I got two of here. The first one is to Sal and Elaine Corrente, 33 North Summit Avenue in Patchogue, this is beautiful. You're seeing so, so much more than this, people fix it up their homes and, you know, some real credit to the residents of the village. Sal, good job, thank you so much, you did a great job, thank you, it's beautiful. Everybody look at this property right now. A Patchogue Pride Award for Jennifer Lee Reggio, did she get to that?
No.
But this is her house on, at 118 North Prospect, beautiful. I'm jealous, the house looks so great. So that's a Patchogue Pride Award, thank you very much, everybody, for the work they do and their properties.
Mr. Cool, with Debbie Newell, Nancy Howard, who attend the annual conference of court courts in Auburn, September 28th, October 1st, at a cost of nine hundred fifty-two cents. Motion, second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
So there. A motion to appoint Tom Burge to represent the village board on the CBA. Joe, Joe Key says that is time, now let's start, Tom starts to do his.
Time for Tom to say this.
It's time, it's time, Tom.
Okay.
It rounds together with everything you do.
A lot of rewarding things happen.
Yes.
It's a quiet morning.
And it's a quick meeting.
By the way, it's Joe.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is gonna be a talking way. A motion to appoint Tom.
No favor.
Second.
Second.
No favor. Okay. Yes, sir, are you here?
Yes.
The, the mayor with the approval of the board has the responsibility and opportunity to nominate a representative from the community to the BID. Mike Kelly of Riverwalk has filled that responsibility for the last seven years. And I, I guess, do I put his name in nomination?
Yeah.
Do I put his name in nomination to continue in that way?
Motion to appoint Mike Kelly to the BID.
Motion.
David.
Good evening, everybody, everybody's doing well? First, I'll be started by, again, thanking the village for their support. For this past Friday, we had our family fun night, really appreciate the support of Code, they were excellent and getting the streets closed. And everybody who came down, Tom, I know you were there. It happened to be the largest crowd we've had for family fun night, the place was packed. This is an event that usually gets a few hundred people and definitely had a few thousand people on the street. It worked out really nice on the east end, kept things a little more condensed. If anything, the lines were a lot longer for people to, to enjoy, the families to enjoy some of the great activities. But it was just a great sign, I really feel, you know, just another sign that people hear something's going on on Main Street of Patchogue, they wanna see what's going on and, and come on down. So it's just another reflection of the popularity of our village. Next, of course, is now Alive After Five, we're in the Alive After Five season this Thursday, believe it or not. Ready or not, here we come. I think everything's all set though, the plans are, are ready to go. I don't wanna say anything about, you know, it's gonna be a beautiful sunny day. We'll just leave it at that, compared to what we had last year. So yeah, please come on down, look forward to all the support from the village and, you know, we'll talk to the police, the fire department. Everybody's on the same page and, and now let's get, get the festival going. So you know, you're gonna see a different flavor, you're gonna see a lot of artists on the street, you know, doing their craft. The, the, the whole Capital One Plaza now is strictly all just children's and the family activities. So we definitely expanded on that as well. And I do wanna just push the trolley service, it's all set and ready to go, starting at five o'clock. And every half hour, it's St. Joseph's College, for those who are traveling from the west, they can just pull into that parking lot. Don't have to worry about finding parking downtown, we'll take them there. And to the, a couple stops will be along Division Street to get people to the riverfront restaurants as well. And to let everybody know what the stops are, from St. Joseph's College, the trolley will go down Waverly and River Avenue. And the first stop is actually gonna pull into that little parking lot by the, the deli, the, the River Deli. That worked out perfectly, because the first curb cut pulls them in, there's a little grassy area that they can be dropped off at. Then there's another curb cut that they can come and turn around. They'll go off to the train station parking lot, they'll actually pull in and go onto the eastern end of the train station lot, where that will be a second drop-off point. And then from there, the trolley come out of the train station, up West Avenue and stop into the courthouse. Will be the last stop, will also get people to the festival, then back up to St. Joseph's, who hopefully will be the next crowd to come down. So, we're looking forward to that, hoping it's gonna be a popular use. And then after Alive After Five, our next event is our Olde's Car Night. That's another very popular event, where we'll have a lot of old car, you know, classic cars on Main Street. Right now, again, we're just on the eastern end of Main Street. Due to the size of the event and the number of vendors that wanna also participate in the fact that we're sharing the street with the vendors and with the cars, and talking with Lori, the chairperson of the Visits Promotions Committee. We're asking if there's a possibility that we could actually extend a little bit further. Maybe to, you know, I would love to go to 112, but maybe at least to Ryder Avenue. Because then we can even incorporate that parking lot, if we had the permission of the village. That's right there in front of Rainbow Shop. Because if we go that far, the people walking down, they would have easy access to that parking lot as well. Just in case, we're, we're at this, we might have some overflow with cars and with vendors, and we're just looking for more space for them. So I, you know, I can put that more in form of a writing, when we're just discussing this today.
What's the date of that?
August 8th, August 8th. We have one more meeting, I believe, before the August 8th, so I can certainly make sure everything comes to him writing. We were just discussing this actually earlier today. Olde's Night, yeah, Olde's Car Night.
Any questions by board?
I think it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I think extending it east, we can do that. Yeah, it's, you know, it would, current plan is to go where.
Maple Avenue is where it's.
Fun Night.
The only thing I, I would wanna know is how would it impact the people who live in Tiffany Apartments as far as accessing their parking lot? I mean, are they able to get in from Maple? I don't have a good sense of that.
Yes.
So then that should be okay and, and church should be fine on Thursday night, I would think, unless I have an activity, you might wanna check.
Is that Friday?
It's a Friday, it's a Friday night. It goes from six to nine.
I would check with, maybe someone who checked with the, the church to make sure they don't have something that night.
Sure, I will definitely, that's a great, great point, the church.
So is that insurance, you are together? Motion to extend it to what?
Motion.
Second, second, David?
Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alright, next thing that I wanna talk about is parking, and the valet parking service. We did initially announce that this Friday would be the first night to do the valet service. We're actually going to delay that one week to the following Friday, 25th. I asked the events, please put that notification out there. This, you know, we have a lot of paperwork with insurance companies and everything, I'm trying to gather it as fast as we can between all the different parties and make sure we can sign the agreement. Plus, we wanna get some proper signage printed up, as, make people aware. And still, you know, we're just, you know, it's not always easy getting in touch with all the restaurants to make sure who's on board and who isn't. And again, just to repeat how this would work, is that the valet, we bring the car to the end of the walkway, the road walkway, between the library and Stanley's Furniture, that's where you drop off your car. You would initially pay the five dollars, they bring the car to Bravo Lot. And then with the ticket you get, it's redeemable at what we're hoping to be most, if not all of our restaurants and entertainment areas on Main Street, that they go to, that they would get their parking validated based on whatever kind of purchase they were making at that location. So again, you know, we just wanna make sure everybody knows about it, we don't wanna run it the first week and nobody show up, it's a waste of everybody's time to do that. We just wanna get a little, another week to get people to add a little bit more. And I know a meeting with Jack on Wednesday, just to kinda go over some of our initial thoughts about how to manage the free parking, I wanted you to get a.
Is this Wednesday, yeah?
This Wednesday, one, alright?
It was next Wednesday.
Oh, it was the next, I haven't did this Wednesday.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, well, I, okay.
Just let me know.
Alright, I'll, I'll check with you, I had it written for this Wednesday, but I might have said the 23rd by accident. Too many dates in my head. But yeah, I just wanted you to get an eyeball of it too, before we made the formal presentation. Our next General Chamber Commerce Meeting, the General Membership Meeting, will be Tuesday, July the 22nd, at the Patchogue Mayford Library, six o'clock, and we invite everybody to come on down. And then I also wanted to highlight that we're working with the Historical Society for an event at the Patchogue Theater on September the 10th. You may be aware that the Historical Society recently was awarded a grant to create an actual walk, a map to indicate all the historical buildings of Patchogue. So they wanna have a big launch, launching event of that map. And that will be, I believe it's a Wednesday, September the 10th, from six to nine at the Patchogue Theater to do that one. So definitely look at that. And unless if anybody has any questions, that's my report. Alright, we're gonna break it then.
Can we still, can we still, could we, free?
Uh, no, it would be, I think, a small fee for the event, we're gonna do like a little piece of Patchogue type of event.
Is that a kickoff or they start society at night or during the day?
Uh, it'll be at night, it'll be a six to nine event.
Mr. Porter, my father, on, a couple weeks back, a month ago, had talked about the renaming of Ballfields. After, for mayor of, of Florida. It's going to be on July 26th, at 2:30 at the park, at Ryder Avenue Ballfields. At the same time, the, the Lundy has their. I'll be there. So I just figured we'd do a bunch of kids around. The renaming of, you know, the Ballfields and Ballbell Park or something like that. Everybody's invited? Maybe if you would kinda put something in, I'd really appreciate it, just because there are a lot of people who work for Bob, back in this, back in the day. So, July 26th, 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request approval to have live amplified music at Fireman's Park for graduation party on Saturday, July 26th, from 12 to 5:00 PM. That's, motion, second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
Request approval authorizing the mayor to execute a pilot agreement between the village and DNF Patchogue ALLC. Motion. Just an explanation on that real quick, is that the DNF is the firm that's putting the assistant living up on, on this main street, on the, on the whole property. What this is, allows us to do is, they're going for a, like yay.
Tax evasion.
Tax evasion, which we probably don't, up to 15 years. This, this pilot does, it brings us to full taxes within five years, 1% a year. Right now, the only thing we're getting for the property is the vacant land, so immediately 20% for up. And then within five years, it will be full time with taxes. Okay, there's a motion, second, no favor.
Aye.
Pause.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I mean Gateway Theater, Old Red, yeah, I guess I could talk about that. I had the opportunity to see Mary Poppins, to get to see it, it's wonderful, if it still plays, it's still on, it's still on.
Well, I was at the New York Times a little bit, I saw that.
Oh, yeah, oh, it was great, yeah.
About the nickel laugh, like, right, it's on.
Great, great crowd, they become really terrific crowds here at the theater. And they've had other children's shows just recently with Cinderella, I think on Friday morning, at the theater, right, Friday?
Saturday.
Both.
Both, both.
Both, yeah.
Right.
So hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, so another successful season by Gateway. I know Paul Allen is happy, the theater's happy, a great relationship. And I know I was there, 10:30, I guess, on Saturday. And there were a lot of people coming into the theater, so, theater's having a hot summer, like the rest of us. What happened?
Mr. Mayor, just a short wish list, and I'd actually, I'm requesting approval to extend our sewer operator contract with R. Censoz for an additional year at twelve hundred dollars a month. The goal is to get Larry Williams to get his license, so that we won't be the outsider anymore, but that hasn't happened yet, it should happen, hopefully, surely. So, if you extend that kind of. Motion, second.
Second.
No favor.
Aye.
Thank you, requesting approval, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a software services agreement with Suffolk County, which is what we have already in mind. Continuing in that. It's a basic, this is the extension of the service, maybe you, supplying, mowing, so, supplies for salt.
Second, that's new organization.
Yes.
Yeah.
No favor?
Aye.
Alright. Request approval to watch the bid to replace the sewer main on South Ocean Avenue, since everybody's been there a while.
We, we could, under almost a conceptually, to have that conversation, we want to buy different. Try to do this one. That, and that, what they're doing is gonna put that down to the fight that goes to water space. Motion, second.
Second.
No favor?
Aye. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting approval to hire Vincent Palumbo as the seasonal laborer at ten dollars and seventy-five cents for our.
Motion, second.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Police.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have the building and housing report for the period of June. And there were eight building permits issued for June, and one super storm Sandy permit that is also issued. I think there will be discussion maybe at the next meeting or beforehand, where we'll try to abolish the super storm Sandy permits. The village has been very accommodating and fair with people that suffered losses and all, and had free building permits for them, which plus the village about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, and some people now will wanna come back for a second permit, because their first permit was just to rebuild the house at the time, now they wanna raise them. And we don't think we could, that's so fair for the rest of the community, so, if you had one, I think we're gonna start to deal with, we're talking about the resolution, so, that'll come out later for me. There were two plumbing permits issued, and two demolition permits issued. Rental permits issued for June was 32, and the notices of violation for June was 46. There were a number of complaints, which were 27. And there were two illegal dwellings or apartments found in June. Fees collected for the ARB were 625 dollars, building permits were 4,900, zoning certificates were 650 dollars, dumpster permits 300, fire inspections 1,450 dollars, sidewalk seating permits 1,000, planning board applications 1,400 dollars, plumbing permits 1,485 dollars, rental permits 11,925 dollars, and zoning applications was 1,000 dollars, bringing the grand total of 24,735 dollars for June in revenue from the, into the building plant. That's all I have?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just, I really don't have anything today. I just wanna compliment or report on the, the very successful Garden Club tour. You know, Jack mentioned, you know, we get two Patchogue Pride Awards, right? Talks about how, how good the village looks, but when you go on one of these garden tours, you go on streets you never go on, you know, you drive down, I can't remember the names of places, and I'm not like some of these guys, drive around the village and check stuff out. But it's just really wonderful how many residences are improving their properties and their, their gardens and so on. And the other thing, the Garden Club, the Garden Club got the best float at the Patchogue Live.
That was the greatest one?
The most beautiful float. The parade was a big success, even though, you know, it was delayed a week, but it was pretty well attended. We had a really good Latino participation in the parade, possibly, maybe the first time, I'm not sure. That was thanks to a gentleman named Jim Daytree, and the chamber, who reached out and organized a really big contingent of Latino business persons in the community, and there was, I don't know how many there were, Dave.
It was about eight different Latino businesses, I think we had like 10 cars that came in that, that section. And you're absolutely right, Jim Daytree was the point person for the chamber who pretty much organized all that.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Good evening, everybody, just have a couple of quick things. In case you haven't noticed, we're filling up more vacancies in the downtown, the J's Stores, there's now only one that doesn't have a commitment to rent. So, we've got, from what I understand, a clothing store moving in and an Asian restaurant, so two of them have at least, the two of them are open. And there's one, one more to go.
I heard rumors about a crepe shop.
The crepe shop, I thought, is going in at New Village, that's in October. Yeah, they were at the Grand Open again, and they were giving that crepe, they're from Fort Jeff. So those vacancies are starting to fill up, which is, which is a great thing. Also, this week, I had the pleasure of going up to county, and it was sort of like doing the closing on a house. I signed all the paperwork for the Patchogue Arts Council Destination Downtown Grant, so that money should be forthcoming. It's not a reimbursement grant, which is good for the Arts Council, because they don't have a lot of money to lay out, so we should be getting that funding in October. And we're heavily into the planning stage for the Pac-Mac Festival, which for those of you who haven't been here, and I've spoken about it before, is a music art cinema festival that will be taking place in October from the 17th until the 26th. And then finally, on the Chinese restaurant on South Ocean Avenue, that wall had the mural painted over, so it's ready for a new mural. And the Patchogue Arts Council had selected artists from submissions that came in, and they brought it down to two finalists. And I'm pleased to say that the CBA board made a decision last week, so we have the artist, her name is Alexandra Dominica, and she's going to star on the project probably toward the end of the summer, when the weather gets a little cooler. So we're hopeful that it will be completed by the festival, if possible. I think they made a good decision on the artist and.
Yeah, very interesting.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, and she's, John Seano actually knows her, and I think her father's an architect, she's, she's done murals before, and even though she's a young woman, she's got a lot of background in this area, so we feel confident that she can execute the project. Yeah, so we're excited about that. Uh, that's all I have.
That's Saturday night.
Oh, Saturday night.
We're gonna remind you, take it apart.
That was actually first on my list, let's get over it.
You're too young to be forgetting.
We had an excellent, two excellent receptions in the Art Space Building on Saturday night. Patch Works, which is the exhibition in the Patchogue Arts Council Gallery, is a two-month exhibition, it's the annual members exhibition. It's, it was a jury show, which means people enter the show, they don't necessarily all get selected. And we had Jay Shuck, who is a recent Harvard Street graduate from Stony Brook University, he did the selections for the show. So I encourage you to come down, the gallery is usually open, I think, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And at the same time was the historic photos, I think that's at the end of its run, it was a closing reception.
No. It's empty.
Oh, it's closing on this week, okay, 17. But they had very successful. Uh, but they had a very successful reception, and it was great to see, who was the gentleman, Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey. Trustee Bob Bailey.
Trustee Bob Bailey was there, and there was a photograph of him as a child, uh, standing outside Village Hall, I think the photo was from nineteen thirty-five, holding a big key with his father, who was the mayor at the time, so that was, uh, that was an exciting thing to see. I'd have to be present there, but it's an excellent show, so, uh, both receptions were very well attended, uh, Patchwork Arts Council in particular was quite proud of it.
What's been nice is that you've been marrying the two together, so both...
Right, so people...
Each one of them, the fact you all, which, a lot of them, they go in their store there.
So, both, both were very successful.
Justice Hill.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm trying to be as brief as possible. First of all, um, we've been doing, uh, the summer programs, the Parks Recreation Department, they're doing fabulous development. Participation this year, the programs has been better than ever, and it's probably going to grow with the second section. But briefly, uh, we have fifty-eight children enrolled in the basketball program, fifty-three in the fun in the sun, eighty-one in the sports camp, forty-three in the sailing, twenty-nine in soccer, eighty-three in swimming lessons, seventeen in tennis lessons, thirty-two in PB basketball, uh, thirty-two. Art, which is new this year, from age seven to ten, they're twelve, from eleven eighteen, they're six, yoga on the beach, we have eight, uh, sailing racing clinic, we have nineteen, uh, chair yoga was, uh, canceled because of, uh, not enough enrollment. Wobits is eleven, and watercoloring, we have five, so I think that, uh, was some really great numbers.
Oh, it was five hundred.
Yeah, this is some great numbers, and, uh, some pretty good revenue as well.
The big thing is the number of kids that you're touching is, is great.
Yeah.
That doesn't count, you have a lot of kids at the PIA, it does.
Oh, yeah.
So you have, you have a part of a thousand kids probably, usually, parks are in the community.
Yeah, it's great, and parents that participate as well, is, uh, fun to see. Keeping that in mind, we have, uh, had some ongoing problems with ice cream trucks on the dock in the evening. Not parking where they're supposed to be, uh, not leaving where they're supposed to, uh, and attracting children that are running across the roadway, uh, and being extremely malicious to our dock security staff. So, keeping that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that vehicles engaged in hawking or peddling of any goods, including food and beverage, shall not use mascot dock after five P M. That's a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Let's work. All favoritized.
Aye.
Thank you. It's going to make a lot of people very happy. Uh, and also, Mr. Mayor, I've been talking to Angel Bora, representing the Lucero American Foundation in preparation for their Ecuadorian, uh, festival behind the Bravo supermarket.
Yep.
Uh, we're still in the, uh, permit stage, and we, we have not given them, sort of, alcohol. Uh, what they have to do is they have to meet a couple of times more with Peter Saraj, but at this point, I would like to approve the festival itself.
Pending.
Subject to, um, Inspector Saraj's approval of the permits for the vendors and alcohol, if it's served. He's got to approve that and the method in which it is served, and...
They need a permit from the state authority.
Oh, they are. Well, what they're doing is, if it does happen, it's going to be a gentleman amongst Bravo, who apparently has a permit for his restaurant.
Okay.
That might, Michael might not expand on.
He, he would still, because the permit covers the premises, it doesn't cover the parking lot, so he would still need to...
Outside service.
When is this festival?
It's in August.
Because they won't accept that, uh, application less than fifteen days before the date.
Right, yeah, Peter's all over that, so, um, but I would like to lock in the festival itself, which would give him more...
Still, I didn't do that, we proved the date.
We proved the date, but what, what we're proving is, well, we don't think we proved anything, but it's, uh, but we have to approve the festival itself.
The, the penny piece.
Right, I mean, we, we, we didn't do anything with it, we just said, this is a date.
We held the date.
We held the date for it.
So you, you guys can do what you like, I think we should approve the festival.
Make a margin.
I think there's some questions as to where it was going to be closed, go up on the street, what it was going to be packed up.
Right, these are, these are the things I had with them, I, you know, I approved the road closures, they make a lot of sense, and they're minimum impact on the area. But it's going to give them a little more teeth in trying to crack members of the approved festival, subject to Peter's approval on the security, security firm, so, like, alcohol, cider, you know, it's just...
Motion. Second.
Second.
All favoritized.
Aye.
And I just have... On the seventeenth.
Tenth. Would you hold up the festival? Would you hold up the festival? Give me that, the festival. Coming up this evening? News festival. Look, I'm trying to kick off on Tuesday.
Friday night.
Friday at four. Four, eleven, and Friday. Right.
Which will be the children's?
Pretty much, then ahead. Some bad, um...
You know, I've bothered, I don't, I don't know much about, just, we'll split our responsibilities.
Right. PD, building, safety.
Right.
You know, emergency services, and, uh, it's actually gone pretty well.
Right, right, we, uh, we, the mayor's right, we've had several meetings, uh, this is the upcoming music festival this weekend, there's, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, um, we met primarily to discuss the security, the presence of the fifth precinct, the evacuation of the festival in, uh, in case of lightning and rain, uh, that was a very important meeting we had, and, uh, also, the vendors were not evacuated. Vendors had refused to leave their booths when we evacuated last year because of lightning, and they had a lot of stuff stolen, in which they tried to put the village, but it's not our responsibility, they have to leave.
That's a shame.
Yeah. And, you know, frankly, I don't leave, but they ordered to leave, so, and we discussed parking, there's going to be, we tweaked some of the no parking on Ryder, and, uh, other than that, it should be same way, but actually, we had a pretty funny discussion about, uh, B.B. King, how we're going to bring B.B. King's tour bus down to, uh, down to the park. Uh, B.B. King is eighty-nine years old, and he's in a wheelchair, uh, his bus driver, his lifelong bus driver is eighty-eight years old. He doesn't, he doesn't drive across bridges, he doesn't drive through tunnels, he doesn't...
Oh, my God.
He has a couple of, uh, deep sound phobias that he, uh, so, and he refuses to drive on falling highways with us, I mean, so we're bringing him in by way of, I, I don't know. Yeah, Bridgeport Fair, I'm not sure, but it was a fairly, uh, comical conversation. Uh, turns out, he's coming down Bay Island, um, so, uh, that, that's the music festival itself. And I believe I have some, uh, housekeeping here, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, request approval to increase salary of various summer staff, with added responsibility with some of the larger rosters that they've been getting, we've been moving some people up, we've moved some lifeguards up, and hired assistant basketball instructors and, uh, what have you, that's a motion.
Second.
Second.
All favoritized.
Aye.
Okay.
And we just prove, increase, request approval to increase salary for various park staff, for music festival, July eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. What we did was we put, uh, the dock staff on the parking lot of Smith Street and Ryder, because it's dedicated to the Smith Street residents who would not be normally able to get out of the driveways because Smith Street's closed for the music festival, so we have added security there. We just bump them up fifty cents an hour from the dock, so that's a motion.
Second.
All favoritized.
Aye.
Jennifer Lee, Regina Shavat, will be here.
Yeah, they're fine.
Jennifer. Talk to Peter.
Mark Siegel from Blums, I want to thank both the trustees and the mayor for doing that, uh, the ticket thing for the three days, appreciate it. And Blums, uh, starting later day, is going to be redone, so starting at the outside, in the front, in the back, in the front, we got the money, we got, uh, the ARB, they're happy, uh, you know, we intended our seven hundred and fifty dollars for the permit or something, I can't remember.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to redo the whole store.
That's great.
Everything will be done.
The upstairs must be completed also.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You got Clever, you doing it?
What?
You got, you got, uh, Clever, you doing it?
Yeah, Julian, and, uh, other guy, Doug, who does a lot of work with them.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
My name is Sam Cosia, I'm not a Patchwork resident, but I have the privilege and honor of teaching in Patchwork schools from nineteen fifty-six to nineteen eighty-six. And during that particular tenure of time, I had the privilege of having Brian Egan's mother, Richard Colacola, was one of my first students in seventh grade, right down here on South Ocean Avenue. And I wanted to take this opportunity at this particular juncture of time, having been, uh, retired since nineteen eighty-six from Patchwork, so you can figure out how old I am, but I had the pleasure also and privilege of having your mayor, Paul B. Pontieri. I've known since that time, our paths have crossed many times during the years, and I came here several years ago, maybe a little long, several, and he had just been sworn in as mayor, and I had the opportunity to address the audience and the board, or the, the village board trustees, about what you could expect from Paul as a result of my experience with him in teaching in social studies in seventh grade, which at that time called for citizenship education, civics, local government, including village. I remember very, very clearly that I availed myself, even though I had been born and raised in Brooklyn and Manhattan, where he had mayors of a larger stature, that I realized that the mayor's office was right down the block, and I used to bring students here for minute village meetings, and I also would have them interview people like Mr. Lektrik or at the Times. So I wanted to take this opportunity to help to let the community know that he has fulfilled, in many ways, the expectations that a good teacher like myself like to be, of all the things I predicted, that he would give you good service, would have vision to bring this community to where it is today, you can't help but travel through Patchwork and realize that I remember it in nineteen fifty-six, and now in two thousand fourteen, that's fifty-eight years ago, and I can tell you that it's such joy that I find coming here to visit the theater, shopping centers and all that, and of course, the front corners now, which has certainly undergone a tremendous change for the better. Not that it was bad before, but things do get old, like myself, and we need to be refreshed and reconstituted. So I just want to take this opportunity, Paul, to congratulate you, and to congratulate the people of Patchwork for voting him in with a very, uh, large majority, and I wish you the best, and I'm looking forward to attending the fiftieth anniversary of the class of sixty-four that I've been invited to in October, and one of the members of the alumni that is Paul Pontieri.
My sister, I'm sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
I'm the class of sixty-five.
Oh, okay, all right.
You got my sister.
All right, your sister, jump. I'll be on the track. I look forward to yours, though.
Absolutely.
God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, brother. I'm waiting for...
I was a bar in the Village Seal, which I see when I walk around the corner from my house.
Your name is?
What?
Your name, please?
I'm getting it.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-five West Avenue, so, and I see those wonderful sidewalks, I'm going nowhere. What? Your last name, please? Skala. Skala.
The C.A.L.A.
The C.A.L.A.
Yeah.
And West Avenue, you said, West Avenue? Uh, I'm so used to calling two seventy-five, well, twenty-five, there's too many cards on the street, but I, and they know who I am, I'm sure. Anyway, um, I was wondering if there were any plans to do something about the sidewalks on West Avenue, because West Avenue has become a throughway from somewhere, or wherever, down to the ferries and so on, and it is...
Yes. I was just moving the microphone so I could see.
Oh, okay. Um, I have fallen several times, I have my knees disease, and it's, it makes me, it balances difficult, and, um, the cracks, the uneven sidewalks, the missing sidewalks, they, oh, make it very difficult to walk on sidewalks, and walking in the street is dangerous because people do three, forty, fifty, more miles an hour just on that little narrow West Avenue.
One, one of the things that Justice Keys and the DPO we were doing, were looking at, areas such as that, because part of this...
I'm sorry. Sorry, people walk from the train station to the ferry.
Yep.
Um, and I've seen people trip, they carry backpacks and so on, and, um, and for me, it's become...
But, but my concern also is that, because there aren't sidewalks in the street.
Why, why?
Because there are not sidewalks there in the, in the street, which is just as dangerous as being on an uneven sidewalk, so, no, I, very much will take it, very, very much will take it.
I was wondering if there was anything in the works that might...
Well, I, I think there were the things...
And I see those wonderful sidewalks that go to nowhere with the Village Seal, that's...
Well, that was put in with a grant, the, the, no, we could have taken the money and put it over there, we would have asked them where the, the grant was proposed and done. Let us take a look at it, let us evaluate it, because we're doing that right now, we're going out for the ownership, the sidewalks and paving and so forth. Let's see if we can put that as part of the program.
I fall, at least for months, and it's, it's become painful, so, the other thing I wanted to mention was, is, are there any plans for a three-way stop on River Avenue of the Delhi era? People wait forever to make a left-hand turn on River Avenue.
There should really be a light there. Be bright everywhere.
Well, something, yeah, right now, there's nothing, it's every man for himself.
I mean, you've got...
Well, she's saying, everyone else, we're going to take an ask.
Well, the thing about this, this Gstaad type piece of it, isn't it, uh...
You can't see who's coming when they're coming, going north on River Avenue.
So three ways.
So you creep out, you creep out, and the people are coming south, and River Avenue have people all the way around you because you're trying to get out far enough to see if there's somebody coming, uh, from the south.
Well, let's, no, I'll take a look at it, thank you, all right? You know, I take it all the time, and I do exactly what you do, you know, it's like a Russian roulette, getting around the corner.
Am I going to go now?
Yeah, because you're not sure if the guy coming up is slowing down, or he's turning, or he's just flying his way through. Good point.
Well, I'll have a few more, but I'll say, oh, come on, it's funny. The sidewalks are really...
Let's, we'll take a close look at it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I bring you a greeting that maybe you might want to consider adopting as your local symbol.
If, if you're here to insult the board, watch us sit down, if you're here to give us some input and speech, but if this is what this is about, then... But if this is what this is about, then we don't believe you should speak tonight. Okay? Take your pardon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, I would like to comment about Trusty Felice and his report this evening. I felt it was a very good report, a lot of facts, a lot of figures. And he expressed an interest in lost revenue, which a lot of you other folks do not express much of an interest in. So, I, I'd just like to compliment Trusty Felice on your report and being, doing a good job. And that's the way it should be, in my viewpoint.
Yep.
Trusty Hilton gave a report, who touched upon, but there wasn't much of a financial aspect to it. So, you know, his report could have been better.
I see plus, Bill. I see plus, Bill.
Well, he's gonna mention, I'll mention. I, I hear it's a sound.
Okay. I'd like to comment about the public hearing a few meetings ago regarding the application for a change of zone on a house on North Ocean Avenue. And I'd like to comment that Attorney Egan, who was present, was very explicit to grant rebuttal time for the attorney representing the applicant.
Which is appropriate.
It is appropriate. You are correct. However, when I requested a public hearing in September of two thousand and eleven, and I asked for rebuttal, I was denied expressly by yourself. And Attorney Egan, at that point in time, upheld what you had to say. And I do not think it was very fair.
Okay, I, let's still say...
Well, why is there a double standard?
I'm not gonna debate, you go back to September of eleven, I'll, I'll look back at the minutes.
Go ahead, because Trusty Hilton made the, there was no, there was no motion to close the hearing. However, the minutes will show you that I asked for rebuttal before Trusty Hilton made a motion to deny. That is in the minutes.
I will, thank you.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Tom Murray, Jennings Avenue. I, here was about a month ago, I raised some concerns about traffic on Jennings Avenue. So, I'm gonna ask some questions, and maybe I should know the answers, maybe they're written well.
And maybe we should...
So, please, just, just let me know, or point me in the right direction. I noticed at the end of my block, it looks like there's a parking lot going in. Could be wrong.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I guess my question is, what type of parking is that for? Is that for specifically the apartments, or is that for public?
Public, of course.
Okay. And that money, does the bill pay for that?
Try this thing.
Okay, thank you. I guess, or what my main concerns, I think, you know, my main concern is the last one, is what is the plan for the parking? Because I'm curious, and again, this is my expertise. Northwest corner, I guess, of the apartments and the detail that's gonna go in that, that area? Where is that parking for those people? Where are they gonna go?
That's what, that's what that lot is about.
And that's gonna...
There's about seventy-five spaces going in.
Seventy-five spaces.
And there's another hundred or so on the inside.
Inside of, okay. Is there any plans to make the five apartment larger parking or anything like that? Any other plans?
There are three other homes, there were three other more that are on that block. We'll look at the values of those as to whether we can pick those up.
Okay.
And some of that has to do with what we're gonna get revenue from the media to be able to...
Okay.
So, we don't have to... One of the things that's, I do not want to have to use general funds, tax dollars, resident tax dollars to pay the part. And that's why we're looking at the media to be able to generate the funds necessary to do exactly what you're talking about.
The power here is from the tax pay, or the money doesn't bother me that much if it goes up. My concern is, is the health and safety.
Absolutely.
And if you put more parking in there. I can see now, right on, right on Ford, left on Jennings, coming into that parking lot. That, that is my main concern here. And, you know, I, I noticed that, I read an article in the events, you had some problems with the antism. You corrected the problem. I'm asking you to get ahead of this.
Yep.
Before you put any more parking in there, you make sure you have a solution to the traffic properties that, that's gonna come on that block.
And that's, that's part of what happens right now. You know, we have that, we're looking at Church Street as, as areas also. You know, because a lot of it has to do with how people get in and out, and you got traffic. Jennings Avenue, sort of, you're gonna see, we're gonna start... One of the things we wanna do is, one of the ways to narrow the roads, create something to put a parking line down the block. Nowhere is now, slows people down. So, we're gonna be doing some of those, since Joe...
Yeah, we're starting in the market, Joe.
We'll start seeing the markings come into place. You know, it's a difficult road to figure out how to do, I wanted the traffic, I mean, you have to move it right on, so I understand, so I...
It may be difficult to control the amount of cars that you use, but we can't control the behavior of the driver. Right. Put the road on the dial, the road down the lanes, and more markings, make it traffic a little more. There's other things going off, gotta slow down, or it may... So, that's the initial start, that's what we're trying to start doing, see what happens.
We had a lot of discussion on your behalf as far as when, when to do this. Should we wait to see what, what traffic's gonna be like? Should we do it now? You know, how much of an impact it would have? So, it has been a thought process.
I, I appreciate that, because I know sometimes it's short-term pain for walking, long-term it's cold, so...
Yeah.
I would think about that, I guess, and we'll see what I'm trying to say.
But, you know, as soon as you came in, as soon as you said that, Jennings Avenue.
Yeah, I wish, just, just so you're aware, I asked if you were aware how many times the police have called that block. So, I just took one quick look, went to one house, okay, just in that area, forty times, forty times in the last two years.
That, what?
The police have been to that house. I'm not gonna say the address, but that general area.
I don't think so.
That general area, forty times. And I'm gonna tell you what time my wife is threatened, by my jokes. I'm just glad it took me ten minutes to get home from work. The police didn't consider it a threat. So, just, just so you have that, that matter.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Andres Costa. For the nine-year-old court. Andres, Andres Costa, nine-year-old court. And just the only reason that I'm here, it was I went in this past weekend. This, no, the weekend before, it was like a first rush into, was the Fire Island.
Yeah.
A rush of people, it's not I get to see that, because I'm new. And it was incredible, all right? They all came, and they parked all over, they parked in front of the lawn. They were like, at least, I would say, fifteen cars parked illegally. All right, so I called, I called the village, and after two hours, they show up. And the person came, he was very nice, and I told him not to miss one. All right, but they weren't, even when they left, they left garbage. All right, so they got tickets, so I asked people around, some people, across the street from my house, they, they pull out their car from the driveway, they would park outside, this way they wouldn't be bothered. All right, so it's only two signs on that side, and Patcho is three. And I wanna know if I can get two more signs.
Yep.
I have a diagram I can show you.
I already warned you, Patcho. I spoke to Mr. Passer today. Who are you?
Patcho. And you got one sign here, that's my house, New York Court. Okay? And this is the whole area, sure? And he goes, yeah, now, yeah. Yep?
Hey, there, so. All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Hello.
Hey.
My name is Linda Scudaro. I'm from the Riverwalk.
Yes.
We were here a couple of months ago complaining about the parking, the permit parking. And we received that, and I want to thank you for it, because it made a world of difference. But we do have another concern, and that's the buses going from the bus station to the railroad, down on Railroad, the avenue. They go like fifty miles an hour.
I'll call the county.
And, you know, there's kids now that are riding bikes and stuff.
I will absolutely call the county to mark it.
Okay.
So, they're coming out, they're coming out of the board, huh?
Right, they're picking, or vice versa. They're going from the railroad to the bus, down on Railroad, and I'm right on Railroad.
All right, they do, could they go one west?
It's from South Street.
But they, they would run it.
Oh, okay, they would run it.
Yeah, they just come zooming down.
I know, it's that myself, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm in a three-story condo, and sometimes it rumbles.
Oh. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
I'm the way more, by Park Avenue in Patcho. I need a path for everybody, it's like...
Did you say rock, was the last?
R.O.T.H.A. I'm sorry, I'm right, and then comes...
Park.
Park Avenue, yeah. Um, so, the issue that my husband and I are here about this evening is, I'm kinda listening to everybody else and realizing that we're having issues with the roadways. Maybe it's a good thing, you know, a lot of people come in and visit in Patcho, but as we grow, the roads have to grow, so... Uh, for more than ten years now, I've had an issue. Park Avenue runs from the Village of Patcho and then the town of Brookhaven, and then ends at Church Street or Nichols Road. Um, so, that's the Town of Ice Slip. But over the years, because the road has been used so much, and people are now gaining the good mile-nail limit, and it's a two-and-a-half ton limit, weight limit on the road, the road is literally, um, combing up, it's, it's, you know, arching up. So, what happens is, when we have a rain event, the front of the parking lot erodes. Okay, so, when I first complained, I was supposed to call the Town of Ice Slip. Uh, I argued with the gentleman, and then said, well, then, if I'm in the Town of Ice Slip, then I should get a refund from the village for seventeen years of paying. You know, it made sense to me. But, um, he's realized where he was talking about, and said, no, you won't get a refund, but we'll come and check it out. Um, the gentleman never called me back. I thought maybe there was a hierarchy, you know, that maybe the Town of Brookhaven oversaw what the village did. So, I called the village. Uh, by the way, at this time, I had a job where I covered from Maine to Virginia and Long Island to Pittsburgh. So, I, I really didn't have a lot of time to follow up on people. But anyway, when I called the Town of Brookhaven, she said, well, I'll come and check it out. And I did. Uh, and they said that it did need to be repaid, but it wasn't in the town's budget to do that at that time. So, she recommended that I call the village again, which I didn't do. Because I, I don't feel that it's my job to follow up on folks that work for us as taxpayers. We put it on the face to do that, and I don't think it's my job to follow up on it. So, um, I complained again, because a neighbor of mine was getting a curb quitting, an asphalt curb quitting, that was damaged during plowing that winter. Um, and there were five guys working on it all day long. So, I thought that was a little excessive. My frontage is sixty-two feet wide, including my driveway, which is about twelve fifteen feet wide. Um, so, I, the gentleman said, I understand, this is a new person now, because it's years later, and he said, I'll take a look at it. And he did, came down, checked it out, but he never called me back. So, um, when Ed Romine, two thousand and twelve, had all those issues with the snowplowing and what have you, they didn't have the equipment to do the job and all that. Park Avenue from, I know, I made a little map, I'm the visual person, so I thought it might help if you guys kind of saw where I'm starting. From Division Street, which is the town, ends the Town of Brookhaven, to Wilson Street, which, you know, is the waterline of the village, there was no plowing during two thousand and twelve. So, I talked to our neighbor in frustration, and I said, well, everybody knows that anything west of Wilson Street is covered by the Town of Brookhaven. And I said, but that can't be right, because it's in the village line. So, when Senator Zeldin came here for his government, open government day, I thought maybe I should appeal to that person. And it ended up that his associate recommended that I should call the village. So, I did.
I never realized, no?
Yeah. I know, it's very confusing.
And I never realized that there was like this dnocturizome between where the village ends
Yeah.
and Ison Taffigan's.
Right. And you, all you have to do is ride down the road, and you can see that's yellow strapping on one side and that on the other.
Well, let me do it, before you even, let me do a little research myself, honey.
Yeah.
Please, because it's the first time that, that this has come to me.
Yeah.
Where I've seen it. And this whole piece of it, that when you go down Park Avenue, that would be the village of Patcho, that there's an area on the other side of that, it's actually, actually still the Town of Brookhaven.
Yeah. We, we've requested, just so that you know, we had, I had to request the Town of Brookhaven. Another bus stop, my, my house is a bus stop four times a day for kids. So, that's the other concern, too, that they have to jump up or cuddle before they get into the bus.
Let me...
But, um, you know, I put details in there, um...
Yes, yeah, great details, and I, I appreciate that.
So, it was damage curving and no plowing?
No, no, I have no curb, I have no curb, and yes.
The street is just being crushed.
Due to this agreement between the Town of Brookhaven Hyrum Department and the village Hyrum Department, um, somehow, the area between Wilson Street and, and Division is lost. And you can live, I mean, our path will so big in front of my house and that.
And that doesn't get prowed in the winter time?
No. And to the rep, no, it doesn't. I, I have to call on the community to...
Yeah. Now, I know the area you're talking about is, um...
It's very hard to...
A more public, but it's not far, okay?
Let me? You have, you can do the phone, I'm working.
I, I'd like to comment more.
Don't you come and give me, I promise I'll do that, babe.
Sure. Um, it's your design. But I do thank you for your time.
You're welcome.